All right, just checking. About 45 minutes per slide on that presentation, so that was very thorough. Great, no, but honestly, but we were just saying because of Corona, we, there's been ti- we haven't really had the time for some of the workshops. So we're certainly, thank you, that was kind of like a workshop as well. So thank you for that. We are going to move on now to Roman numeral nine, mayor and council member items. There's an addendum, and this is by Councilman Forbes, a discussion regarding letters received from four HOAs that are required per their zoning ordinances and development orders to provide shuttle service to the beach. This is green sheet number 20-05116. Fred?
Yeah, thi- this is a problem that has come up, and Corona or COVID-19 is further complicated. The, we have four communities that each one are supposed to furnish free beach shuttle service to and from the development as, at to get different build-outs. Now, Benita National was the first one that had to do this when they, still under the development control, developer control, Lennar, and then they took it over March the first. And then we have another one that has recently had to do it, which is Valencia. The other two developments is seasons and landings. Now, this requirement was levied upon these developments way back in the 2005, '06 period, before the bubble blew. At that time, and this is not in the green sheet, this kind of tells you how this happened. At that time, all that property was envisioned to be one development, which would be done by Ronto. So that's how it originally got in, that it was one development. Had that development gone forward, it would have been bigger than Benita Bay, and that's big, 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 and bigger than Pelican Landing, it's almost as big as Benita Bay. What happened was, when the bubble blew, Ronto went belly up, they lost all the land, then it was bought by different developers.
Belly up on that project, right Fred? Not as a complete company, but on that project.
Yeah.
Ronto, yes.
Right, so what happened?
They didn't go out of business, they went out of business on that project.
That's, yeah. So what happened is that different developers bought pieces, and you end up with the biggest development now about 1,460, which is Benita National. Valencia is going to be about 1,050, 1,100 max, and then the, then you go down to a smaller development, which is 250. And so it's, you've got the same requirement for all, each one of them, you have to have a van, and so you've got a little development of 250 looking at close to the same cost that somebody that has a bigger development. Now, the other problem with this is that we're into the effects of Corona, which is this social spacing and all that. So in the case of Benita National, they have a nine-passenger van plus driver, 10. With spacing, you're, you're only going to be able to haul two or three passengers on that van. On top of that, the information that they provided you from the one service that was been running two or three years, which Benita National, the ridership was not very good, and the cost per person round trip was in excess of 300 bucks. Then, I know Valencia has gone to a, using a, basically a chauffeur type of service whenever somebody wants to go, and you've got pricing in there for that, it's very high. We have two choices, at the good thing, in all of this prior work that was done, they empowered the city manager, who rightfully didn't want to take it upon herself to do it, because she wanted council to, to deal with this. The city manager did have the right to waive or cancel this, or suspend it, or whatever. So there's two options, one option is you could give a moratorium for at least two years, because I think this social spacing could last that long. That would give an opportunity that where they could explore, instead of having a van for each development, that you'd have a single van service operated by the four of them. Possibly the way the cost would be figured out would be prorated on the number of doors in each community, so the 250-door can be pay a whole lot less per year in operating costs than the 14, 50 or 60 unit, size unit. That's one option. The other option is you could just flat cancel at this point. Now, I've got representatives here to speak for the, the other HOAs. The first speaker is going to be John Asher, I believe.
For the record, my name is John Asher, and I'm with GL Homes. We're the developer and home builder in the Valencia-Benita community, also known as Benita Beach Road Estates, from a development, development order and zoning standpoint. I, I've read through Councilman Forbes' green sheet, and it has all, it's very accurate, has all the, the facts in there. And what, what I'd like to add to the, his statement is, you know, initially, when this was approved, it was one large master planned community, 5,000 units. And at that time, all of these, the communities that size, all envisioned, you know, buying property on the beach and having their own private beach clubs. That has since been unavailable to them, because it's been deemed illegal, and they can't run those operations, some of their grandfathered in there, Benita Bay, and the Brooks, and some of those other ones. But for our residents, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to pay, it's costing $350 a round trip. I mean, I don't know about you, but I really don't want to pay $350 to go to the beach on a shuttle bus, that I have to bring my bag with the towels and the lotion, I've got to bring my beach chair, maybe my umbrella, and maybe a small cooler for, you know, some water soft drinks. To take that on a, you know, a shuttle and get dropped off at a public beach, it just doesn't make sense. And right now, as a developer, we are, we're funding it, we're subsidizing, it's run through the HOA, but we're subsidizing it. Come the end of this year, we're going to have a new HOA budget, and these fees are going to be in there. The residents are going to, you know, question it, they're going to be very upset to see that they're paying, you know, over $300 for whether it's one person, or six, seven, or eight people to go to the beach. We're all going to hear the uproar. I mean, the, we prorate or abate the assessments from, for the HOA budget, and so we've had this line item in there, knowing that it was a possibility, it's coming up, but it's now hit. We're, they're going to get hit with these increased fees to operate this, and it, it's, I think it's going to be an ugly situation with our residents. We were, we hit our 400 CO sometime in February, we got the system up and running shortly thereafter. It was utilized the first week, a limited number of people, and then, you know, on through until COVID hit in the middle of March. So we were in operation for a little over three weeks. The utilization was not very extensive, there were a handful of people that went multiple times, and, you know, random people, one or two in the party went, and it, it, it sounds nice, hey, we've got a beach shuttle, but from a practical standpoint, I don't think it makes sense long-term for us. You know, we'll do whatever we have to do from a requirement from the city, but hoping that common sense will prevail in a situation like this. So, that's all I have to say unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have, do you have a question, Laura?
No.
No, okay. Who's that guy in the orange shirt? Welcome.
Let's go Chicago Bears this time. Or Chicago Cubs. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today. For the record, my name's Steve Riggs, I'm a board member with the master HOA for Benita National, and I'm here to represent our members post-turnover from Lennar, as, as Councilmember Ford mentioned, we turned over at the beginning of March. John brought up some quicks, information about what's occurring out at Valencia. We have some practical information, and actual information that was included as an addendum in the green sheet that Councilmember Ford supplied. From an actual statistical standpoint, this last year, 2019, as you'll see, we had a grand total of 120 round trips. That's individual round trips, not bus round trips. So one out of every three days, essentially, we took one of our members down to the beach and brought them back. The majority of the 120, 80 of them occurred in the January through April timeframe, and that was 80. That was it. So that's during season. So in spite of the fact that we advertise our service on our website, we have wrappers on our nine-passenger van that's parked out in our amenity parking lot, mayor, you've seen it out there by our tennis courts, and every new member coming into the community, whether it's a new owner or a renter, goes through orientation and is made aware of the service, it's just not a used service. Our expenses are about $38,000 a year to maintain that van, just operating expense, doesn't include any depreciation expense or major costs. And as Councilmember Forbes mentioned, our cost to operate those individual round trips is about $318 per person per trip. So from a fiduciary responsibility, just like you all have fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers of Benita, we have the fiduciary responsibility to our members. We're going to be entering into our budget phase for next year right now, and we would really appreciate the relief from having to maintain the service that is not used. So thank you very much, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, thanks for the update of information. Fred, there's going to be other speaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to point, no, there isn't, but there's one more thing that needs to be pointed out, and that is that it's substantially farther from the front gate of Benita Beach, I mean, Benita National than it is like from Benita Bay, or actually Pelican Landing. And the Pelican Landing, it's, it's a different thing, they, I believe they go to an island that's off the, the coast, basically, of, of their development, I believe. But it, but it is substantially longer, even if Pelican Landing was going to go to the beach down by docks, it's still farther from Benita National than it is. It's, it's over five miles from their front gate, just the I-75. So there is a, it's, there's a substantial difference in the distance, too.
Chris, did you have something? No?
I got anything.
Sure, no, free-flowing, absolutely, if you have something right now, Chris, that would be great.
Well, I don't have that much history on this, I'm not sure what the public policy was that was trying to be achieved when we put these requirements in 15 years ago, or whatever it was.
Right.
That it would seem like, you know, the market should, if there's a market for van services, it'll be met, there's not a market for van services, why should we force somebody to provide them?
Right.
I make a motion to...
Yeah, I was just going to say, and Ar- and, no, and that's great, but Arlene, do you have, you know, a little of the historical?
Sure, mayor, if you would, I'd like John Dahlmer to come forward. As you see on the, on the agenda item, it is stated that the staff's recommendation is the two-year moratorium, and that is based on when we did do the, the visioning for Benita Beach Road, some of the traffic constraints and concern we looked at was in the future providing as much opportunity for shared ridership. And we understand the individual costs, the individual associations, but if there's time to study, to look at how a more effective or efficient, financially efficient method there could be, we also recognize with COVID-19, for the next couple of years, there'll be a different idea of ridership and, and people being together, so that's why we were looking at the two-year moratorium, because this would be carried on into, if, if it's completely outright, outright removed at this point, it would be difficult in the future if you look at that provision in Land Development Code, but I'd like John to give a little bit of the background.
Great, thank you. John?
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Hello there.
Brief history lesson to, to address that question. As part of the, the improvements and requirements among this development when it was first approved back in 2005, 2006, was the idea that, first of all, Benita Beach Road needed to be extended. It was not paved out this far, and I'm not even sure if the dirt road had gone out this far. The second thing was, there would be what they called at the time a voluntary contribution that was above and beyond the, the impact fee amount for those units. That was to address the fact that we were building this development at the very end of Benita Beach Road, and all the impacts would be felt along Benita Beach Road almost entirely, and they would be used to address some of those impacts. The third was the idea that most trips that went the entire length of Benita Beach Road would be residents going to the beach. And so to reduce the number of single trips that were going to be placed on the road, and to minimize the impact of these developments, was the idea that there would be a shuttle. The shuttles were already in place in several other developments, and they seemed to be running adequately, if not very well. And so the idea here was that you would try to employ the same operation. Fast forward till today, we have units built, residents living, and we are in a situation where the traffic along Benita Beach Road is even greater than what we had anticipated back in 2005. The idea now of running the shuttles is not necessarily a good or a bad one, it just is, and now we are in a situation that while the idea and the requirement to provide this transportation service was included, there really wasn't more detail provided in terms of how it should operate and how it would be determined to be a success. For it to be waived or for it to be deleted, the language in the zoning simply states that the city manager can make that determination, and the council would be notified. We met with the attorney representing one, if not more, of these developments, probably six, seven months ago, and discussed what we would need to do to evaluate the success of this transportation service, and basically asked for ridership information that would go through the season. And from that information, we would go back and, and make a determination as to whether it's something that should continue, or something that should, should either be temporary or permanently abated. As a result, we waited for information to be submitted, that information was not submitted, and Councilman Forbes was contacted, and we have wound up here today. So as we were going through this discussion as to whether this should be altered or changed permanently, our thoughts were, with recent health concerns, there really isn't much thought that needs to go into it. The idea of temporarily suspending these operations seems to be pretty easy to make, and, and one that we could recommend. Two years is probably not an unreasonable amount, and in fact, if this is something the council wants to just reconsider in two years, we can do that again as well, that's, that's one of your options. However, I think that, that during that time, we could probably come up with some, some ideas with now multiple developers, HOAs, whoever may control the property at the time, to come up with a more permanent solution, and bring that back to the council at the end of whatever time you, you choose to suspend these operations, if that's your option. So I hope that a little bit more lengthy of a historical lesson than I had planned is helpful, and if there's any more questions, I'm happy to help.
Council, what's your pleasure?
I just had a comment.
How about Jesse, then Amy, how's that?
Okay. Amy, if you'd like to go first.
No, I'm sorry.
Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm actually vice president of a micromobility company. So this, actually, for me, this is Fred, I think this is a pretty good one. My business, you know, I mean, the reason I'm going to give, I'm giving you this backstory is to kind of give some guidance, maybe, to folks in, in the crowd who are working on this from the various places. So my company, we operate in six states, we're at big universities like University Auburn, University of Oklahoma, and we offer shuttle service to alleviate traffic issues and to help with parking problems. And we've actually recently, post-COVID-19, pivoted from buses to more green, alternative, open-air vehicles, right? So my, my company, obviously, I'm a councilperson, I couldn't do it in Benita, but the point is, there are numerous companies, so it says here on the green sheet, you're, they're going to merge, you know, the four existing services into one. My point to you is, my company bids on things all over the, all over the place, including in Canada, and there are numerous platforms and companies who could probably do this in a flawless manner, probably cheaper. So we're not putting dollars in, we're just saying, let them do it. I have no problem with letting them do it, I'm just saying, I would tell them, they might want to consider, you know, instead of joining the four of them, seeing, I don't know the procedurally how they would go out to RFP, but there are a lot of companies that do this specifically and could probably streamline what they're doing. So just food for thought for your folks.
Thank you, Jesse. Amy?
Just to follow up what Jesse said, you know, I thi- and I didn't quite follow everything that John said, but I think that when we originally devised these plan developments and things, one of the reasons that we have such an amenity in here was because we were trying to moderate what we perceived would be congestion along Benita Beach Road. The second thing, I think it's clear that because of the division of the first plan originally being 5,000 units, and then you have three or four separate entities doing it, it's clear that they shouldn't have four of these going. But if you just look at the numbers now, I don't see how they could even run it, you know, this is just from one entity. The total picture has to be looked at, so this is long explanation for saying that I'm in favor of what the staff is recommending, to do a moratorium, because there are all kinds of complications and issues that this group of residents can get together and try to get a solution, because we still want to encourage them to try to moderate the traffic along Benita Beach Road. Is this, is the reason why they're so low ridership that people are just using their own cars, or are they just not interested in going to the beach because they have all their pools within their community? This is what we find with us, it's not a lot of people go to our beach because we all have our own pools. But again, just to personalize it, Pelican Landing, who has a shuttle bus going from the parking lot to their beach shuttle, is looking to remove that shuttle because of the expense and the inconvenience for doing it. So other communities are trying to come, do alternative ways, and I think that they, that these communities should do it creatively. So I'm not in favor of just absolving them of this rec- this requirement that they have here, because I'm not sure we fully understand why we did it in the first place, other than they might have sold their, their community better, because they said, you're not so, we're so far east, and if you still want to go to the beach, we could get you there. So I mean, it's an amenity that they, that, that they can use to attract residents there. So there are lots of things going on here that I don't think is clear from the presentation, but I definitely think we should do a moratorium and have them figure it out, because nobody wants to spend that kind of money for 20 people, it just doesn't make any sense.
Fred? Thank you, Amy.
Well, I, minimum, I think we got to give them the moratorium. I, I think this is...
I make a motion to pass and give them a moratorium. Do you have a second?
There's been a motion for a...
Second.
Two-year moratorium, Laura?
Well, I...
Why two years?
Well, we can discuss it, I, I don't think we should tell them what to do, but Amy seems to feel that we do, so that's something for...
Well, the staff recommendation is two years.
Two years?
The staff's...
I just want it.
We're happy with two years, and we can then go back to it.
I, I'm famous for making motions, and people are like, what's the motion? So I'm just making sure we know what the motion is.
Yes.
Okay, two-year moratorium and a second?
Yeah.
Council, is there further discussion?
Second, second.
Yes. And there's been a second, yes. And Amy, do you have more discussion?
No, I didn't, I thought you were asking for a second.
Oh, okay. And we have a second, and we're clear on what the motion is. Mike, do you have anything? Chris? Last call, Fred?
Nope.
Staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Wrong call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Fred, that's not you, hang on, wait your turn.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Skip over me. Fred, y'all set? Okay. Aye.
Skip over you?
No, no, no.
No, I corrected, yes.
Fred's turned him twice. He said Councilman Corey, and Fred dove in.
You want to go out of order?
I sure said President.
The sound in here, so...
We do have a meeting at 1:00, so we...
Yes, we do.
Tick-tock.
Okay. Everybody happy on that? Okay, great. We're going to move on to the next item, and this is discussion on a resignation letter received from the zoning board member, Don Konikowski, and this is green sheet number Gentlemen, thank you, and ladies, thanks for being here with us today.
Good luck.
I make a motion that we accept Don Konikowski's resignation.
Well, I'm going to hold that just for a second, please, because I just read the line, and I want to give some background, of course, people that are looking at it see it. Certainly am well familiar with Larry Kurlander, and well familiar with Don Konikowski. Derek and Arlene and I have had several conversations with each of them, collectively, individually, and by way of background for folks that are watching or may not know, on April 11th, an email, Don sent out an email to her personal list...
Point of order, can I just get a reason why we're doing this?
Because I want to set a standard in the city of Benita Springs, and I'd like to be given the, the luxury or the respect to talk through why I'm bringing this forward for a vote.
Okay, but what are the issues that you want to...
Well, I'm, I'm getting to the issues.
Oh, okay.
So I can appreciate that, Laura, thank you. I have the floor, and I'm going to talk through them. Don sent out, on her own personal time, her own private time, to a large email list, I assume, and Larry Kurlander was a recipient of an email that she sent out that was written by Bill O'Reilly. On April 11th, Larry Kurlander sent an email to me, "Mr. Mayor, the attached email from the newest member of the zoning board is beyond outrageous. While Ms. Konikowski has the right to speak her mind, she, as a member of the zoning board, should be a responsible citizen. Promoting outrageous conspiracy theories and putting them in a partisan rant is the height of irresponsibility. She needs to resign from the zoning board immediately." I forward, I then forwarded the email from Larry, and I sent it to Arlene, Matt, and Derek, as you can see there. Further discussions ensued, and where people have civil liberties and the right of First, First Amendment rights of speech, I thought that if we could work this out, certainly in the Corona hypersensitivity times of cabin fever and people being cooped up, I had the discussion with Larry, had the discussion with Don, there again, they, they had a conversation with Derek, they had a conversation with Arlene. And I said, as the one person in a city of 55,000, almost 60,000 people, I am the one person that fortunately or unfortunately has the right to accept this resignation with no further discussion. I chose not to take this path and wrote the following letter. And I sent it on April 24th to zoning chairman Larry Kurlander, zoning member Don Konikowski. Dear Larry and Don, I commend each of you for your leadership in Benita Springs, and certainly know that we are all dealing with COVID-19 and the new realities of video conference calls, extended home stays, and added stresses the best that we possibly can. I was disheartened to hear that your recent call was unable to resolve your differences. I was similarly disheartened to learn of Don's desire to resign from the zoning board. I have no intention of accepting that resignation. Larry, the work that you have done to raise the level of not only real-world knowledge and expertise of subject matter, but also professionalism on the zoning board cannot be understated. It is the reason I supported the change to our term limits of committee chairmanships to extend your term. You may feel that my decision to not accept Don's resignation requires you to submit yours, quite frankly, just the opposite, it does not. More directly, Larry, your work on the zoning board is not done, and you should, and should you submit your resignation, I similarly will not accept it. I hope you both, I hold you both in very high esteem, and with the current health crisis gripping our country, it is important now more than ever to put things into perspective. Don, you have worked on behalf of Benita Beach and our citizens very diligently over the years. I would suggest to each of you that an errant email should warrant extended and professional discussions, as it has, yet not end relationships. Even in hyper... Even in hyper-partisan times, we must learn to forgive lest we only compound that which divides us. Public service is a great responsibility and the comments we make should not be easily set aside. This should be viewed as a learning moment for each of us and not a final act. I take great pride and make great efforts to examine all sides of any and all issues and in resolving differences. I would ask that you each examine your feelings on this matter. If you cannot for any reason, or will not for any reason, find a resolution, kindly let city attorney Derek Rooney and city manager Arlene Hunter know in writing. I will present your request to the Benita Springs City Council for discussion and final resolution. My best and warmest regards to each of you. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, City of Benita Springs. That was on the 24th of April. On the 26th of April, Don Konikowski sent me a letter. Dear Mayor Simmons, I am offering my resignation from the City of Benita Springs Zoning Board of Appeals as of the last, as of the last day that I served and voted as a board member effective February 18th, 2020. Serving first as a councilman and then as my mayor, you have always been an inspiration to me and many of the city. I sincerely thank you for your continuing support. I appreciate all that you have accomplished as mayor for the benefit of all residents of our fine city. Your strong leadership skills have earned you my much deserved respect and admiration. I appreciate all that you have done for me and I look forward to working with you in the future. I greatly appreciate the opportunity I was given to serve you and the city council. I also, I am also grateful to have been able to volunteer my time to the residents, to serve as an important, to serve on an important board of this beautiful city. Thank you for the opportunity. Sincerely, Don Konikowski, Hickory Boulevard. Folks, when you sit here and others that will sit in this chair moving forward, you examine, yes, your personal beliefs, your system, but also your constitutional rights and your freedom of expression. So just so you know where my mind is, that's why I brought this forward. I did not unilaterally want to punish somebody by making a decision and accepting a resignation based on an email. Certainly, there is some difference there, a philosophy, and everybody that sits on this board knows that seven of us up here do not have an identical philosophy, nor should we, nor would we ever expect to, and that's what makes us a great city. So from that point of view, my only, my only avenue from what Derek and Arlene explained to me is if I will not accept the resignation, then it comes to the full board for a vote. And I just wanted to give you that background as to why I brought this forward. So thank you.
I'm actually still confused. So you don't want Don to send out articles or Larry to comment on articles?
Derek, can you dive in and please know the sensitivities and what I was trying to protect here?
Since, since there aren't any additional written submissions by the, the two zoning board members, I don't want to go too far into the details. What I will relay is that in my conversations with both of the members over this issue, Ms. Konikowski felt that the email that went to Mr. Kerlander was inadvertently sent, he was inadvertently included on that. She did not write the letter, she was forwarding a letter that actually was not even written by the alleged author. She regretted the decision immediately. We did pass those, those remarks on to Mr. Kerlander. Mr. Kerlander felt though, however, that, that the public statements, although the private individual expressions of a member of our advisory committees, they have every right to do so under the law, it is their statement, would, could provide the basis of some perception of bias or prejudice in members of the, of the public who went before the zoning board. And he felt as a, as a judge acting in a quasi-judicial capacity that that was possibly terminal to that representation. So that was his concern. We tried to work the two issues out. We were unable to, to get a resolution between the parties where this could continue to move forward. Mr. Kerlander felt that if Ms. Konikowski was to remain, that he would resign, and I think that's all summarized fairly clearly in, in the mayor's letter. From a perspective of city policy, you have a handful of issues. Your code of conduct, which you're actually going to be looking at again today, indicates that if there is an alleged impropriety by a member of an advisory committee, that it does come to the city council for decision. That same code of conduct also expresses with respect to its advisory committees that there should be a diverse view of opinions amongst the memberships. So in a sense, they're, they're both right. The question really comes to you to make that final decision. The mayor felt that, he thought this was something that could move forward, that this should be a learning experience. If the members didn't agree to that, then he wanted to make sure that it was the council's decision, which is what your policy lays out.
And, and I will just add, in the conversation, one conversation that we did have is, one of these members would be correct in a roomful of attorneys, yet the other person would be correct in a roomful of judges. Yes, Fred?
No, I just wanted to put my two cents in. Number one, I think this is just a proposal. It's, it's a shame we had to get this far, but I think what would be, would have been another idea to do is let this situation cool for about two months and then try and talk to the people again, because when you have a disagreement like this, usually time makes it better. If we don't want to do that, then I would say, unfortunately, I mean, I, I have the utmost respect for Larry, the utmost respect for Don. I've supported Don on all kinds of things and I've supported Larry. I think though that she has offered her resignation, she has not asked to rescind it. So I think that really she's resigned. I mean, you could go through the formal motion of accepting it, but I, I, it's unfortunate it got this far, it's unfortunate we, that I hadn't been able to, I didn't have this idea until I saw the green sheet, so it's not, that I should have said something earlier because I didn't even know about it till I found out about the green sheet. But I do think it's a shame that we couldn't give it more time, but if we can't, then I think you have to accept it because like when Greg DeWitt resigned, we didn't have to vote on accepting his resignation. When Peter O'Flynn resigned, we didn't have to vote on that, so. But, but if we want to, we can vote on it and I'll vote to accept it because she has tendered it and she hasn't asked to recant it. So that's, that's a significant thing. So that's, that's my point.
I'm just going to come down around the table for everybody.
I'm kind of of the same mindset of, of both you and Fred. You know, it, it's a shame that, you know, it's gotten to this point and like Fred said, you know, time does heal most wounds. I personally don't think either of them should resign over it. And I almost feel that if one's going to go, they should both go. That's, that's how I feel about it. I think it should be an all or nothing, you know, either, you know, if one, they, they should both stay on is how I really feel. But if they can't get past this, then they should both go.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, Chris?
Well, I disagree with that. You know, she has a constitutional right to free speech, but she doesn't have a constitutional right to be on the zoning board. And our first responsibility is the citizens of this community and the citizens of this community should have good government. And the position of being on the zoning board is one that I think requires judicial temperament. It should show independence and, and objectivity. I think it was unfortunate that she put out the email, but I think she's sort of spoiled her own nest by doing so. And so I would vote to accept her resignation. She wants to resign and I don't see any reason to stop it.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, Chris, and I would just add, you know, we're, the seven of us up here are elected, these positions are appointed, so it's certainly not a perfect example. However, obviously, I'm the mayor of Benita Springs and I, I send out emails and I send out Facebook posts and I put things on Twitter and I put things on LinkedIn, and if somebody disagrees with that, that's fine. Honestly, it is. That's fine. But does that mean I should be asked to step down as the mayor of Benita Springs because somebody disagrees with me? Laura?
Well--
Oh, the microphone, Laura. There you go, sorry.
This is a voluntary position, which Don Konikowski agreed to do. She was appointed, she did her duties. As a private citizen, on a private email, she sent out an article saying, didn't, all she said was, "Interesting read, educational" or something, right? Larry Kerlander was not forced to read that. He was not forced to, to embrace it. He could have made a decision, this is baloney, and let it go. But instead, he wrote an, this is what, she doesn't have a right? This is YouTube taking down anything that contradicts Fauci? What are we doing? What right is it for you to get involved in Don and Larry's dynamic?
As the one that holds the sole power to accept the resignation-- --for discussion. And I decided to bring it forward for discussion.
Okay. And again, based on what? Because--
For one, for me.
She, she conducted herself inappropriately.
Derek?
No, there was a violation of--
As--
--of, of, of some conduct of propaganda that we have to dispel?
No, there's just, as-- --that's able by our city charter to accept this resignation or not accept it and bring it forward for discussion. I chose, obviously, to bring it forward for discussion and not unilaterally accept the resignation. For a lot of points that we've all mentioned here today--
Well, I'm on the lines with Mike that both, I mean, if Don's going to resign and Larry, who also offered to resign, I believe, we should accept--
And I wasn't going to accept his either. It was a unilateral decision to have this discussion and I certainly hope, you know, there's--
It was unilateral? They wanted this discussion?
They, they--
Because I don't see them.
They're not here. You're right.
And they were encouraging you to bring this forward.
They both offered to resign and I told both of them, neither one of them, I would accept their resignation.
And they tried to work it out.
They did, they did, they did try to work--
Don, two days later, she did what you asked.
Well, Derek, that's, and let's go back to a conversation. Let, and there's, but there's things here, Laura. Like I'd said to Amy earlier, we're in violent agreement. We are absolutely in violent agreement and that's why I brought it forward for discussion.
As the parliamentarian of the board, I think we need to organize the conversation. I would recommend that we allow Councilwoman Carr to complete her comments and not do a dialogue, because I'm assuming many of the questions she's asking are rhetorical in nature.
Sure.
The issue, the issue is, the council should make a decision on this issue. This is a, a policy decision, your adopted rules of procedure, ultimately take what, what is alleged to be impropriety as something that the council should make an, take an action on.
Laura?
Honestly, Derek, I couldn't understand a thing you said. Sorry.
Oh, okay. My, my recommendation is have, have the discussion and then make a decision. I mean, ultimately, there is nothing the city council can do to force Ms. Konikowski to stay on a zoning board.
So what is on the table except both resignations, except neither resignation, except Don's resignation, except Larry's resignation? What, what is on the table since both want to resign? And we're going to force them to stay on? I'm just following--
As, as a, as a practical consideration, you can't force anyone to, to resign. What has been indicated by Mr. Kerlander is that if Don stays on, he will leave. So he has not submitted his resignation, he has just said that he would submit in the case that Ms. Konikowski remains.
So we're going to force Don to stay on the commit, because we have to take an official vote to accept her resignation? Or if we don't accept it, she has to stay on?
She doesn't, we're not, no one's going to come to her house and grab her and say, it's 9:00 a.m. on the, on the second Tuesday and you have to show up to a meeting.
Well, in the time of COVID-19, this, I find this actually divisive and not helpful for our community, but I'm one vote.
Thank you, Laura. Jesse?
In my mind, she doesn't lose her ability for free speech when she signs up for zoning. So if she didn't transport that information via a city device, a city email, or something along those lines, or say, this is my position based on zoning and send it to somebody, that's why, I, I tend to agree that you have, you have constitutional rights and if you aren't using your authority and/or position to influence other people to do things, she should be allowed to do that. I know Don, Don is a, look, she's a great activist for the city of Benita Springs, particularly west of 41. I don't think, I don't like the idea of us getting into a situation where she sends it, you know, she sends a pro-Trump email, Kerlander doesn't like it, so now she's got to go. But I don't like the idea that she has to get, you know, anybody's getting forced off. So I mean, I think saying, we would like for you both to stay, if you guys decide that you both can't stay, we would ask that you both go, like Gibson said, is fine, because I don't think they're both going to go and I don't think either should have to go. I mean, I think, for example, when I was chairman of outreach, we had a member who decided she did not want to stay on the committee. And that kind of went through smoothly, but you know what? It worked itself out and the committee seemed to work better. I'm hopeful, whatever happens in zoning, it can be a similar situation. But I say we give them the option to either, you both stay or you both go.
Thanks, Jesse. Amy?
Well, Mayor, I have to compliment you on this letter. It was one of the pretty amazing letters that you've written.
Thanks. Well, it's from the heart. It was obviously from the heart.
I have to say that, this is a tough situation. I'm fully in concurrence with the idea that we have free speech. And even if you look at the, there's a lot of stuff that's going around, unbelievable. And I hit delete so many times on this stuff that's going around and from people that you'd be surprised that you're getting this information for. And we all have to be aware that we should be cautious of our sources. But I don't see that as a, as a problem with serving on the board at all, and I am, I have to say frankly disappointed that Chairman Kerlander had taken that position. And I'm also disappointed to, to say that should we decide, we want to deny the resignation from Don, that he's going to resign. So I feel like we're kind of over a barrel here and I don't like bigging that position. If somehow we could either say, work it out because this is, we make our own views heard in this instance, that it, it doesn't rise to an ethics position, yeah, I mean, I don't see how it is. So I think that there needs to be more mediation here if it's possible. No one's going to force anybody to, to, to serve as a volunteer, but I think we should make it cle, I want to make it clear that I am, first of all, in favor of free speech, all right? And that this shouldn't, not even be here. And I am disappointed that we're here. So if we can get some mediation in there, get them together and talk, or if they can do it, that would be the best solution for me because I'm not happy having Don resign because she has a conflict with the chairperson. And I'm not comfortable with his resigning if we ask him to work with her.
Yeah, but I'm not comfortable with him requiring her to resign.
No, but we could, we could ask, we could have a director from the council saying, work it out, we want you both on. That could be the message.
But haven't we done that? And hasn't Don replied in writing as requested two days later?
I'm not, I'm not sure if there was any conversation in between. Maybe, if it's hopeless, then they should come back to us and say that's hopeless. But that's my opinion.
That, no, I appreciate that. You've heard seven opinions and I'd be, and does anybody else want to speak again? Mike? She does that all the time for me.
I know, you do.
And Laura.
You, you penned that letter though, didn't you?
Like, like I said, no, the, the wordsmith, the wordsmithing is always the key.
Did you have a ghostwriter? No, that letter was really amazing. I think it--
No, but absolutely, Mike.
But I'm really, I'm concerned about this. I mean, this is really not, we've made something that should have been nothing, then, oh, this is poor, you know, this is not a very good email to--
not a very good email to pass around because the information in that is suspect. That's the, that's the, that's the reaction to that. And when you get these suspect emails and you spend five minutes looking at it, you say, "This is ridiculous," and you delete it. All right? But I have received things from my sister that are similar to this, you know? And I send back, instead of saying, "You're an idiot," or whatever it is, you say, "Check your sources." That's my method of saying, "This is not, this is not an appropriate thing because it's, it's not factual."
Trust but verify, right?
But that, that's, that was the reaction that was appropriate to this. And honestly, we have so, from the federal government on down, we have people that are telling us things in our emails that are not right. And it's hard often to distinguish which are things we should validate and which we shouldn't. So it's a tough environment that we are. And I'm disappointed, really, very disappointed. Thank you for bringing, I would say, throw it back to them and say, "Let's get a minute, get some kind of mediator in there to talk it through." And if they can't, then they have to come back to us and say, "I want to see them both here and say, 'I can't come to any agreement,' and then we'll make a decision."
Is that a motion, Amy?
Yes, that's my motion.
Second? There's been a motion and a second, and I want to allow further discussion. Derek, you've heard the motion, everybody's heard the motion and the second. With that in mind, Derek, any thoughts before we take a vote or hear more discussion?
I know that the, both myself, the mayor, and Arlene have all gone over this ground with both individuals. Maybe the recommendation we would seek is having, selecting a mediator, someone, maybe another member of council, someone else who can, who can make that attempt. Time has passed since this initially occurred, and I'm sure that both individuals are watching this meeting now. And maybe it'd allow them to, to reflect and, and be more open to some, you know, recompense.
If we get some uninvolved party to talk it through.
Counsel, is there any more discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second.
Could you clarify the
Yes, and I was going to say, Amy, you're great at words, so clarify your motion. Or Derek, yeah.
Derek, you summarize.
I would, I would, the way I've written it down is, is not accept the resignation and an indication that the, at this time, the city council's not willing to accept resignations. Have the two, two members meet with a, some form of mediator and see if this can be resolved. If not, we'll bring it back to the council before the next zoning board meeting.
And I would just add, Amy had mentioned in there, and if they're still unable to resolve the difference, let's schedule for them to come to city council and speak with us.
Exactly. Who's the mediator?
To be determined. Yes, Fred?
I think if it isn't resolved, then if they
On the microphone, Fred, sorry.
If it isn't resolved, and they've both resigned, they've both resigned, I don't see a lot of value in having these, those two people in here doing crossword puzzles or battles or whatever. I think this is, you know, give it the time, and then if it can't be resolved, then she's still resigned, and he may have resigned. I don't know.
Fred, there's, and I was just going to say, yeah, Laura, real quick, there's, there's no perfect, there's no perfect answer.
No, there is.
No, but, but I'm going to say this, and I feel this strongly.
Okay.
There were no perfect answers for our founding fathers either, when they came here from countries foreign, to stand up for democracy and freedom of speech. There, I've said it, okay? Yes, Laura?
What kind of precedent are we setting? A person resigns from a voluntary board, and we say we won't accept it. And then we say, well, not only we will not accept it, you need to come in and prove to us that you're really working on trying to work this out. And it's not our role. It's not our place. It is, it is bizarre that we think that we could say, I mean, if I say to you, "I'm resigning, it's a personal matter," you're going to pull it out of me? You're going to say, "You must tell us why you're resigning?" I mean, this is sort of like washing, you know, family laundry in public. This is something that
Everything we do is public, as you well know.
Right. But the two of them had
And this is no, no different.
But what are we doing now? We're imposing that they have to work it out? They have to come here and, and in front of us make a case? I just think, I would definitely think twice about volunteering if that's going to be the outcome.
It's less than perfect. I, I absolutely agree. Chris, did you have something?
I just think you're setting yourself up in a trap because she's already resigned. So now you've in effect said, you know, "You need to work it out." But what if she doesn't choose to do that? Then are you saying, "Well, because she doesn't choose to do that, now we're going to make Larry resign?" I don't think that's
No, Chris, and I absolutely hear you there. I just want further, future members that would like to volunteer and help and work with the city of Benita Springs, not think they don't have First Amendment rights. So there's been a motion, and there's been a second. Counsel, is there further discussion?
Before, before taking the vote, Mr. Mayor, you tried to make a modification. There was a second, there was not a vote on that. So the, the item that I see currently is, send it back to them to try and work it out, and then report back to the council.
Okay. We'll leave it at that. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson, Councilwoman Forbes, Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cory?
No.
Okay. Thank you, team. Not an easy discussion at all. And I, believe me, I know it. So thank you.
And thank you. What I will do is, I will probably follow up with Arlene and maybe some of you to find, if I can find someone that, that we feel both parties respect to, to agree to serve as a mediator.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this Councilwoman Simons, hello again.
I'm sorry you guys had to go through that because, again, it's hard to find people who understand our community, who understand the comp plan, the zoning rules. And we have two people there who did, well, you know, I'm going to rehash your argument, whatever. I, you know, maybe Dawn resigned for other reasons she doesn't want to tell you about. So whatever. And to make Larry go away. He's got such great expertise. He's done a great job there. So, you know, I'm in favor of both of them, but. Okay, you had transportation recommendations up there. And one that I didn't see on there, but I did mention to our friend Matt Feeney and my council member, Mike Gibson, was Imperial Harbor Boulevard into Pueblo Benito. Councilwoman Corumba mentioned roadways that affect, you know, walkability and safety for children. There's a lot of children that go into Pueblo Benito that need to have that little, it's a little teeny weeny bit. It's not going to take you a lot, but it does involve the railroad, so might cost you something. But that's Imperial Harbor Boulevard into Pueblo Benito. Probably from here to there. Not a lot, but that would be one. Number two, you're Terry Street South. You, the city owns a piece of property right there on Rosemary Creek on Terry Street between South Riverside Drive and the creek. Great place for a bioreactor if you're going to put those, cover up those swales and put a faster running culvert in there. I think it's a great idea to cover up the culvert and put in a sidewalk on the south side. More, you know, safety for the kids who have to walk on that side. Number three. Okay. We do have a beautiful narrative about Benita Beach Road and our roadway there. First, it started 20 years ago when we became a city because roadways were a big deal. And, you know, that was one of the issues, was because Lee County wasn't addressing our needs here. They were building, 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 but they weren't taking care of our roads. We had 78 miles of unpaved road in Benita at that time. So we went on to create a comp plan. And in our comp plan, it says, "We're a green city with a beautiful commercial parkway known as Benita Beach Road." It's right in the visioning study, the first paragraph of your comp plan. So we want it to be a beautiful commercial parkway. That's a word, parkway. Very different than what happened when the city council started to work with the MPO and just continued on with the suburban model of making us kind of a pass-through between Naples and Fort Myers and widening the roads. Well, yeah, we needed more capacity. But more capacity for transportation means you have more trips for development, and it became kind of like the snake eating its tail. You never got anywhere. It became congested, then you widen it, became congested. Okay, so, because you were allowed to put in more development because you had greater trips. Come to about 2007, that road was at a Level D going to a Level E. And so when they were expanding development out east, there was a plan to ask for a voluntary share, you heard that today, talking about the HOAs, a voluntary share contribution to upgrade the level of service on the road. And so that's why that came about. But moving on, Councilwoman Forbes, Councilwoman, at the time, Simmons.
One minute left, Martha. Thank you.
Yeah, and myself and other council members had a five to two vote. Do not widen Benita Beach Road because you would increase trip capacity, hence the snake eating his tail. You never get past creating more development because, whatever. Okay, we had a five to two vote on that. And a five to two vote on not having an overpass. I got a study from Fort Myers, because they fought this too, and Fort Myers on Colonial Boulevard, that says within 2.5 miles of an overpass, your real estate values go negative. Okay? Not only does it affect that quadrant area, but it affects way beyond that. So I want you to keep that in mind. And we have a beautiful narrative, having a beautiful commercial parkway going to our beautiful beach. You did the land, as our smart city manager mentioned, we did put all that visioning stuff in place. You did that. And with DPZ and, was it OTUL? You did a great job on that. And we have a narrative to tell them. We became a city because we have a local vision to keep it a beautiful, non-suburban pass-through highway type deal. We want it to be our beautiful city. So I can help you write something for narrative that way, but you guys are doing it. So I really appreciate it and thank you. Never get rid of the railroad. It's an incredible regional asset. Don't just give bikes for railroads.
Saved by the bell, Martha. Thank you very much. Thanks for your thoughts. Other members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
Mayor?
Yes.
I had an item, if I could just quickly.
Please.
I met with Captain Blake yesterday, Captain Lee Blake, Captain Lee, I'm sorry. And he went over the weekend and the beaches. We had a number of people that were calling. And he said that things went smoothly. In some ways, lack of parking works in our favor. And he said that the distance, social distance rules were maintained. They had drones. They had actual folks on the beach walking, riding, and so it was good. He said, even with stores empty, there haven't been break-ins or robberies to, to any great extent. He did say that there's been some mischief and wearing masks have been a problem. One young man decided to borrow someone's car, a quite nice car. And they had him on tape, but he had a mask on. So, and when he dropped off the Maserati, he went and stole a Lexus. And again, on tape, but they did figure out who it was. His dad identified him. And he did say that also the fatalities on our roads are cut in half, as are accidents, literally in half. So that's a bit of good news there, I guess. And people are being cooperative and friendly and, on the whole, toward our officers. So all good there.
Thank you, Laura. Derek?
City Attorney's City Attorney's. So you have two items for you today. The first item is, and Councilwoman Simons mentioned this at your last public meeting, once we, when we have new members come on to the council, we, we remind them of the city's adopted code of conduct. We ask you all to review those issues as a regular item, to remember the ethics rules that you are bound by, the city's own governing conduct rules. These are, these are laid out in the charter as something that can lead to even removal or disqualification from office. So they're very important. We just, you know, always need to remind the council of their duties. I know you, you guys go through training. The new members will be going through training with the Florida League of Cities, ethics training is required. But we have our own rules in addition to that. And so you should all received a binder with requesting your, to read that and sign off on it. And you would have got the binder separate.
Do you have a binder?
Yeah, there should.
Okay.
That's it.
Did we get it already?
Yes, Laura?
I brought my
Okay.
There's no need to take, take a motion or anything. It's just, just presentation.
But I have a question on the ethics.
Seven signatures needed is the bottom line, I think. That's what I'm hearing.
Did we have any violations of the ethics code today? Because it states, and this is just a learning experience. I'm not, this is not like action or aggressive or anything. But the mayor basically endorsed Kevin Ruane when he was speaking. And then Jesse offered, like, mandatory guidelines for the candidates running for office that they need to know this. Is that okay? Or is that cutting the line? Because, you know, everything is blurry. So where is the delineation of going too far and not going too far?
Let's start with a proper explanation of what I said to Mayor Wayne. And I didn't say that we should. I said we should consider the fact that we have 10 people running for federal office after Amy brought it up.
Okay, but that's perfect clarification, because now Derek can say
That's not what you said, though. That's not what you said. So be clear. No, if you're going to talk about me, be clear with what I said.
I wasn't being, I wasn't, this is a learning.
Okay, then do it appropriately.
Right, well, I just said, thank you for clarifying.
Counsel, thank you very much, counsel. Derek?
I bet you all wish we had a gavel today. On the endorsement issue, our, your adopted rules of procedure and ethics indicate that all council members have the right to endorse candidates for local office or other office. They should refrain from doing so during council meetings. Other issues of, of public concern that come up that are maybe political in nature, maybe matters that are appropriate for policy discussion at the city council level. What I would ask everyone to do is to familiarize yourself with those rules, particularly the rules with respect to interactions with the public, as we saw today. You know, you are speaking for the city and yourself. And to make sure that when you are speaking out in public, that you are indicating your personal, you know, positions versus those adopted by the council.
Boy, those First Amendment rights again, Derek. Here we are. Okay. Counsel, further discussion? Okay, seven signatures, and you'll get those, Derek. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is, I discussed briefly at your, the last meeting we had. The issue has come up about while the city council is moving forward and having regular meetings again, we have the space to do that. Many of our advisory boards, and particularly some of our land use boards, which are backlog with work and have deadlines to meet, these are, these are oftentimes volunteers, retirees, people who are in, in a more cautious state given the current situation with COVID-19. So what I prepared are guidelines for going forward with virtual meetings for our advisory committees. With particular emphasis on the land use boards, what we are proposing to do is, the zoning board, the local planning agency, they will have virtual meetings. The public will have the opportunity to submit comments as they do here. But because those are quasi-judicial and there is an element of due process, we will also allow procedures for people to be recognized for standing, to have additional opportunity to submit documents or cross-examine witnesses. We will also provide an opportunity at city hall for people to show up and speak live on the camera and get those comments on the record, so that there really isn't a loss of that due process. Another change that I added in after discussions with staff is our neighborhood informational meetings. This has been an issue. We require that there be a neighborhood informational meeting before an application is made, and then after that application for a land use item is found sufficient. The issue is, they usually are holding them in churches and other congregation areas, like the firehouse, and those facilities are not available. And so we've seen some evidence where people have not been able to get those meetings that have deadlines, requirements before their hearings achievable. So what we've laid out is, you have to prove that you have tried and been unable to secure facility to accommodate the public, and that your virtual process has an opportunity for the public to participate. the public to participate. And if they cannot, because they lack the technical skills, you're going to make accommodations for them. So hopefully, we won't have that issue crop up because I understand the chief de sweat is going to make the fire station available very soon, that this won't be an issue, but we want to put that in there because, you know, governance still has to go on. You still have to get the, the business of government done.
And we'll be utilizing this as a model. As you know, you have other advisory boards that are part of procurement policies. For example, the Art and Public Places Board receives the bids for the artist cottages. So we've got other regular city business to move forward. So we'll use this as a model for the additional boards that have pending business that needs to keep moving forward.
So I would, I would seek a motion to accept the, the resolution emergency order as laid out.
Second, okay. Great, there's been a motion to accept in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Forbes. Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Derek. Anything else?
Nope.
City managers' items. Arlene.
Yes, Ann Wright, could you please come forward? We're going to briefly, not for a decision today, we just wanted to present the proposed budget calendar for you all to, to review and provide us any feedback with so that we can solidify that as well. And then, Ann, if you could go straight into item B as well.
Right Finance Director. First item being the proposed budget calendar, and that is listing the various dates that we are proposing to have meetings and discussions related to the FY 2021 budget request. And you see two dates, one date is June 17th, a regular council meeting date to address certain matters related to the budget. And then July 1st, again, a regular council meeting date for other discussion. The city managers' requested budget would then be presented in a longer meeting, which would be a special meeting related to a regular council, be a council meeting, but it would be related specifically for the budget, the July 27th meeting date. And that would be the meeting when we would go over the big budget binder that you'll receive. Then moving into September, we have two required by state law, budget hearings. One is referred to as the tentative budget hearing. I've listed as a first budget hearing, and that's proposed to be September 9th. Both of those meetings need to be after 5:00 PM. So that would be on a Wednesday, September 9th. And then the final budget hearing being proposed to be September 16th at 5:05, again a Wednesday.
Thank you, Ann. Can I, and I apologize, I was not paying close attention at the beginning for the summer workshop schedule.
They're actually going to be a part of the regularly scheduled council meetings, June 17th and July 1st.
And July 1st. Okay, I apologize, I missed that. And we go through this every summer, and this summer is no different. So thank you.
Okay.
On those workshops. And if we need an extended workshop past the first, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to anticipate, I will participate by telephone.
Okay.
If need be. Not that that's ideal, but just, just laying it out for now. Fred?
When's the first one? June 17th?
June 17th.
Okay.
And then July 1st.
And, and those are regular council meeting days during which time we will have discussions. So.
And at which time, hopefully, the NCAA will open up campuses in July, but.
And then you also did.
Otherwise, I'll be around all the time. You won't have to worry about it.
You, you also did receive, I believe it's in the form of a calendar for the month of September, just so you can see when those proposed hearing dates fall in relation to the, the county meetings as well as the school districts' meetings, because we have to avoid having our meetings on the same day, or required not to have them on the same date. They can't, can't occur on the same date.
Thank you, counsel.
So moved.
So moved in a second. I'll second it. Jesse, did you have something? Further discussion?
Good, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve in a second. Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ann. Arlene?
Yes. Sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Ann, could you please move to your next item?
Our external audit contract has now over with for our current auditors. They, the contract has basically expired as of February, or as of the fiscal year 2019. So we now are in the process of needing to solicit proposals for, for a new appointment of our external auditor, excuse me. And so the state requires an audit committee to be formed. Under the state requirement, the committee must be at least three members, and the, a member of the governing board or the city council is required to be, serve as chair, chairperson of that committee. In the past, when we did this in 2015, all three committee members were members from, from the council. And so it's up to, to your choice as to how you'd like to structure that. The Government Finance Officers Association does have some best practices, and in that best practice, they state that all three members or all members of the audit committee should be members from the governing board. And that's what was done the last time that the city council did appoint a audit committee. So it's your pleasure as to whether, how you want to structure it. If you want to have other people in addition to the required one council member to serve, that would be your choice. And we can bring this back the next meeting for a resolution to make those appointments.
And Mayor, we're not asking for the appointments today unless counsel has some direction.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I think we should follow the best practices and ask three council people to step up, and we can talk about it next time. But I think we should determine that it should be the three council people.
Couldn't understand it.
She couldn't understand you, she said. I, I think we should follow the best practices that has been recommended by the Financial Boarding Board.
Government Finance Officers.
And that is that three sitting members of the governing board be on it. And I think we should continue that practice, and then we could determine who should be on it at our next meeting. Is that what our plans are?
Correct, correct.
Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Arlene and Derek?
Yes. That sounds great.
You could take any of the losers from today's advisory board.
Matt's against it, but he's outvoted three to one. No, no, just kidding.
And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And good point, Amy. Thank you. Arlene?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item we have before you is the, is the appointment of the mayor and members of the city council to your various committees. I do know that you have a 1:00 PM zoning meeting starting, so we're happy to continue to have this discussion today or to continue to the next meeting. It's the desire of the council.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I would say to move it to next meeting.
Are you giving us our appointments or are we just discussing?
This would be the discussion where you decide your appointments. If you, if you wanted more time for that, we can move it to the next meeting.
I could bump it. I'm good with bumping it.
Well, ideally, I'd like to discuss it today, but it's not ideally. It's not an ideally kind of day.
It's 107, all right.
It's 107. So ideally, I say we should move it, not ideally, less than ideally, move it to the next meeting. How's that?
I understand. I'm sorry, but I have a.
Sam, I am. I like green eggs and ham. Dr. Seuss language. Okay, we'll move it to the next meeting.
So I'll move quickly. So a couple of things just for housekeeping, as we did need to advertise some, some items that were required for advertising. The pastor has been graciously to allow us to be here for our next meeting, which is June 3rd. So this will be the location. Should the governor change direction and move the state into the Phase Two, we'll evaluate that for the June 17th meeting. But as of right now, we've been offered the opportunity to be here for June 17th, but we'll take that on a case, by case basis as we move forward through the process. We did want to let you know that I, as, as Councilwoman Carr mentioned, I also received an update from the sheriff's office. There was a lot of communication from citizens from this past weekend regarding beaches. I just wanted to reassure everyone from Captain Lee that there will be the entire community policing unit involved in Beach Patrol this entire Memorial Day weekend, and there will be backup support on the waters as well. So they plan on being in full enforcement during the Memorial Day weekend for, for social compliance distancing. Yesterday, Lee County provided a list of multiple facilities that will be opening in the county. We wanted to advise you that we're working through some procedures to be consistent with them to open those same, similar facilities on Friday, which is the day they're talking about opening. But we're going to add, because of the size of our facilities and our staff, we're combining some of the best practices we've seen from the Benita Springs YMCA, that some of the procedures they're using for their pool along with the county. So we're looking at some, keeping our same hours, but a reservation process. We'll also turn the entire pool into a lap pools to provide for more lanes. And we're going to remove some of the pool furniture so that we have the opportunity to clean in between. We're also going to be providing shifts from 8:00 AM. The reservations will be staggered so we can continually moving people in. If someone does come to the pool, they can put their name on a reservation. But we wanted to do the reservation so folks weren't waiting around the pool or in their cars for a time to open. We're also going to be moving forward with opening our basketball footsall pavilion, of course, groups of under 10. We're going to be asking everyone to comply with social distancing. Of course, no league play is permitted, as well as consistent with Lee County. As far as the recreation center fitness room, we are looking to maintain the governor's direction on social distancing as well. We'll be making reservations for sessions of 45 minutes to allow for sanitation between sessions. We'll have reservations, well, we had staggered days, mornings, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and afternoons to the eve, so early mornings, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, evenings, afternoon and evenings, Tuesdays, Thursdays. And we're going to be putting all this information together in a handout for you. Marni Soccer Fields will be looking for opportunities starting this Friday for non-league play, just recreational use of groups of less than 10. And we will have staff on the fields. Those are, we're looking at, it will start this Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, where we can have staff there. And that, this is soft opening. We'll work through social compliance, compliance with social distancing, and we'll look for opportunities to open more up, more hours up.
Is this tomorrow?
This is a Friday. All of these starts are for Friday. And we're continuing to evaluate each of the opportunities we have to open more facilities. We did want to let you know, we are continuing the contract we have with the Benita Springs YMCA to provide childcare service, starting daycare, which I believe was June 8th. And what we're going to do is not open the recreational center for group classes, which are not permitted at this time, or any other group or planned activity so that we can utilize the entire space of the recreation center to offer more opportunity for kids to participate. And we'll be working with the Y on procedures of a questionnaire and temperature checks consistent with the governor's direction.
Okay.
And I did want to let you know that after this, we do have a very short 15-minute break before zoning will start, and we do have some food for you in between.
Okay, fantastic. That is dynamite. Arlene, anything else, or Matt, anything else? Okay. We are going to move on now to mayor and council member reports. Fred, let's start with you down there, and please speak into the microphone.
Only thing I want to bring up is that due to the good work of Matt Feeney and my looking at something on Benita Beach Road, it appears the county is at least on a survey from Logan Boulevard down to Benita Grande, the newer section of the road, which has the same issues as apart from the east side of Logan Boulevard going towards Benita National. Namely, there's all kinds of settlements occurred around the catch basins on the sidewalks. It's actually a trip and fall hazard and a biker hazard, a jogger hazard. So they're going to look at that. I believe, I think there was a ticket or something issued on it. I was going to send a letter to our commissioner, and I think Matt talked to the people in Lee dot, so that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Fred. Mike?
Uh, no, to help save billable hours, I'll not say anything. Sorry, Neil.
Rooney will tell you how much money he's saving us. See, I like that. That's good for Chris.
Nothing to read.
You're good, Laura?
I'll wait for the end.
Okay, okay. And I'm good for now. Jesse?
I just kind of wanted to touch base on the downtown, you know, the folks who have the idea that we need to now be opening those RFPs. To me, it's, bottom line, it's the wrong direction. I, I mean, I don't see things the way that, that they're saying it. I mean, the idea that doom and gloom of our economy and we need to bury our head in the sand. To me, we have spent, you know, I didn't want to spend $7,500 a month, but we've been doing it. I didn't want to spend millions of dollars, but we've been doing it. It's been 20 years. The only thing left we have is downtown. And we're going to sit here and have people tell us that maybe we should not consider doing it when it wouldn't be shovel-ready for two years. We have no idea what the economic impacts are going to be. And quite frankly, I've read numerous articles that say both construction and the state of Florida are going to bounce back quicker than anybody. So I appreciate the concern about downtown, but I, I just want to reiterate the fact that I'm firmly committed to finishing downtown. We've spent too much money, and it's the wrong time to pull the emergency brake. So thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. And Amy, just real quick, and I'll just add on to that by saying, there's been people for 20 years telling us we can't do it. We're on the verge. Optimism, not pessimism. Amy?
I just want to mention the veterans, since we're not having a veterans celebration or event this, this coming Monday. And I just want to point out that we still, as a city, are totally committed to our veterans and anyone who has served our country to give us the freedoms that we spent 45 minutes talking about today and all the others. But I really want to point that out, and I'm sorry that, I understand why we can't have our event, but I'm going to miss it.
May I?
Yes, 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 yes.
I would want to add, so you know, there, there was some questioning concern about the memorial flags that we display in respect of those who have passed serving us. We did reach out to American Legion. Those are actual official burial flags. And if you're familiar, they do put them up the morning of the ceremony and take them immediately down afterwards for their preservations. So as a sign of opportunity to share, share our respect, we're going to use the city's Fourth of July flags, a little bit smaller in size, a little bit less, just to display in the park over the weekend to show support for our veterans. But, but we will not be utilizing the actual memorial flags as, those are sacred flags that adorned a casket at some time, so.
No, and thank you for the reminder, Arlene. And I guess I'll work with Arlene and Laura Taylor on this. I had seen on social media, somebody had a question on that. If somebody could help me reel in where that social media post was, I'd like to get back to that person via social media or, or calling. But I, I would like to get back to them regarding that. Thank you.
So we will have a display of just the flags.
Do we as a, maybe Laura's already doing this, but do we as a city want to have some kind of public information?
She, she is doing that. We will have information all over the weekend showing support for our veterans.
Right, have some message about how we just are continuing our support. That would be great.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, counts other, and I guess I would just say one more thing about downtown. I wasn't going to say anything, but Jesse, in, in the interest of time here, perhaps it was things that used to go on in the park, but that was a long time ago. Perhaps it was that it was known as Burrito Springs downtown. I think we remember hearing that. Perhaps it was that it's too ethnic downtown. Perhaps it was that. Perhaps it was zoning. Perhaps it was height restrictions. Perhaps it was density. Whatever the reason, there has been a small, and when I say small, very small faction that has been opposed, opposed to downtown for 20 years, whatever the reason, and I just gave you a few of them. So I would lump COVID-19 into that category. That's selection D for those that are looking at A, B, C, or D. It's D. It's D. Several excuses, doesn't matter what the excuse is, they're opposed to downtown. We have worked too hard and come too far to blink now. Is anything in life ideal? No. It wasn't ideal when Jack Antaramian put in the bid all those years ago. It was certainly less than ideal, and that didn't work. We now have information, which I'm not going to get ahead of myself, so I'll bite my tongue. There's people that want to move forward with the city of Benita Springs. And guess what? Me, I for one, want to move forward with them. If they want to be part of our downtown Old 41 and part of our community, who am I to say and pretend I'm an economist that went to Harvard or Yale or any of the great schools for economy? I'd like to hear some economic theorists, quite frankly, balance economic realities versus public realities versus political realities versus, oh, let's blame it on COVID-19. I've been opposed to this for 20 years. I'm looking forward to moving forward. I'm looking forward to the debate. I'm looking forward to the discussion, and I'm looking forward to advancing it when it's ready to advance, and I cannot wait for next steps. So with that, is there anything else, council, at this time? Okay, approval of the minutes? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
It's me again. Councilwoman Corumba, thank you for remembering our veterans. Thank you, council and mayor, for remembering them. Thank your father for his service, mayor. The V A and the American Legion are also not open because of their state commander, their district saying, you know, not yet, we don't have the approval to do that, also because they're not like restaurant bars, they're, you know, they serve a lot of alcohol, so they won't be open for the memorial services that they do. I did get an email from the former commander at the American Legion asking for my help to put flags at the Benita Cemetery. The V A has restricted any groups from putting flags at national cemeteries or V A cemeteries, so that's something we're also not going to be doing and recognizing our veterans. So there will be flags at our Benita Cemetery on Imperial Parkway, if you want to pay your respect there. We have a lot of veterans from, we have a World War I Marine Corps veteran in there, which is pretty cool. I think we also have a Confederate veteran in there and a Union veteran in there. So it's, you know, it's historical, but it's also a place that we can express our appreciation to our veterans. So I want to thank you for that. It is Monday. I'm going to be out somewhere doing poppies, if you guys want a poppy, to remind other people that it's also Memorial Day, and we remember those who have given their all for our country. That's what Memorial Day is all about, those who have sacrificed and haven't come home. But they're in our hearts. And I want to thank the council members who have showed an interest in the lobbying idea I brought to you at the last council meeting. I think it's a good idea to support the voters who have supported Amendment 12 and worked that into a referendum or into our city code of conduct. I want to thank Arlene and Matt for being such, Derek, for being such fine city employees. Oh, Anne, throw you in there too. We are really fortunate to have the kind of staff we have in Benita Springs. They're smart, they're energetic, they're getting the work done, and they've got a lot of work to do. But I just can't be more appreciative of what you do for our city with like creative ideas and, you know, you're saving us money, we like that too. I have been helping some people in other cities on some projects. You know, people call me up from my experience in the Florida League of Cities from a long time ago, they remember me, they call me like answer lady. And, you know, to hear what they're going through in their cities right now, we are vastly different, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank council for making some smart decisions about how we move forward. So I know it's been a long day. Thank you, and God bless you. Have a good zoning meeting.
Thank you, councilwoman. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to, it's 1:22. Arlene, you said, yes?
I just want to say, I'm sorry, but I have a 2:30 doctor's appointment, so.
Yeah. Arlene, I'll leave it up to Arlene.
Yeah.
And you, Amy. You guys decide what we're doing.
No, just, it's fine to take a break, but let's not take it too long.
We were going to suggest 15, 20 minutes at the most. We've got, we've got some.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was going to last so long.
I mean, I don't know, honestly, but by the time they go through the presentation, are we going to be in a situation where at 2:30 she's going to be able to vote?
I have to leave it to her to get there.
Do you want to take a break and just get through it quickly?
Do you want to, do you want to just ask for?
Do you just want to eat while the presentation is going forward?
Yes, yes.
Rooney's getting down to some logical advice, I think.
Let me just check on, that we're not permitted to have the food in here, so.
No food in the church, so we can skip the break, and I would recommend, in the abundance of time, for Councilwoman Corumba that we.
You could just, you could continue, I'll just vote, that's all.
No, 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 I'd like to do that, is that okay, council?
You may want to take them out of order, because we have, we have the applicant and representatives for one party, and the other one's a city initiated. So if you're going to take one, I would say go with the BG mine first.
Exactly.
Okay?
Because the other one will be pro forma, won't it?
Amy, I'd like to have you here for one, I'm sure everybody else would. Chris, yes?
Chair Wayne, if you could just move the second item on the warning wire to just be a consent item.
Derek, no, it has to be adopted at a public hearing.
Okay.
It is a legislative item, so we don't have to go through a bunch of steps, but.
But let's do the, let's do the BG mine first.
Why don't, why don't we carry on? Like I, like I say to Fred, and we're dissecting the dissection, let's roll. Welcome, thanks for being here. And if you guys need some pizza, I think it's out in the lobby, I'm not sure where it is, but welcome, thanks for being with us.
David Dupu, I am here representing the applicant, which is BG Mine. I will be as brief and as quick as I can.
I apologize, and I'm pretty good with a big mouth and pretty good ears. Yeah, there you go, speaking.
Is that better?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. This is our team of consultants. I am, as I said, David Dupu. I am a principal with the firm of Morris Dupu Associates. You see, we have a team of lawyers, civil engineers, traffic engineers, ecologists, blasting specialists, and geologists have all been part of this process. Next slide, please. Subject property, as you are aware, is in the northeast corner of the city. It is at the extreme northeast corner and was annexed into the city in the year 2003. Next slide, please. Around the city property to the north and to the east is Lee County property. It is in the density reduction groundwater resource land use category. And as you know, both the northerly property and the easterly property are now in public ownership. To the west and to the south and north is to the left on this slide. The west and the south is the city property. And on this slide you can see is not only the city land use designation, but the actual uses on this property. Just off the slide, which is just to the west, off the slide to the bottom, is the existing Citrus Park and Belvilla developments that are part of the city and have been part of the city for quite a number of years. Next slide, please. Comprehensive plan amendment is being requested to bring the property into the appropriate city future land use category. Proposed plan amendment category will facilitate redevelopment of the mine property into a low-density residential project. Next slide, please. This is the primary language, I'm not going to go through it. It's in your package along with the map that shows the map amendment as well as the performance criteria. The category right now must include an existing vested mine. This is the only existing vested mine in the city. So it is this property that it applies to. Additionally, I would note that it has the unique characteristic of being adjacent to the Water Management District Crew property, which is the property directly to the east, as well as the Edison Farms property, which the county has acquired just directly to the north. The amendment itself would limit the density on the property to a 0.522 units per acre and have setting maximum number of units at 700. In addition, there are performance criteria that are included as part of the language for the amendment that include things like the restoration and accommodation of the existing and historical regional flowways, as well as the existing and historic groundwater levels. Restoration and preservation of onsite wetlands and onsite indigenous upland habitat, reestablishment and preservation of existing wildlife corridors, indigenous management plans, native landscaping requirements, extensive and additional stormwater management criteria, including additional water quality treatment criteria prior to water going into the mine lake, which is part of the stormwater management system that contains the drainage system for both sections of land that are on here. It also includes on and off-site transportation improvements subject to prior agreements. It protects public potable water and requires that central water and sewer be provided for the project at the developer's expense, and it prohibits golf courses. Next slide, please. The proposed amendments will establish an ecologically sound basis for the reclamation of the property that's consistent with the protection of natural resources that is found in the city's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The conservation fringe category of land use seeks to promote redevelopment of the property in a way that incorporates the existing historic natural systems and promotes design flexibility, which would, internal to the development, encourage pedestrian connectivity and complete streets as well as greenways. Next slide, please. The proposed future land use map amendment will enable the city to keep pace with the projected population increase, providing additional housing opportunities while promoting a clustered form of development, preservation of native habitat, connection to central water and sanitary sewer systems, and enhance the protection of natural resources. Next slide, please. The data and analysis that supports the proposed amendment includes, but is not limited to, the 2005 Raw report, the 2009 DeLeese Fitzgerald analysis, the 2013 Baraco report, the City of Benita Springs Citizens Water Quality Task Force report from 2014, most recent population estimates and projections from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research of the State of Florida, groundwater hydrological and geological reports that were submitted as part of the application materials, the traffic analyses that have been done as part of this application, the lower west coast water supply plan of the Southwest Florida Water Management District, various impact analyses that have been submitted, the various ecological studies and reports that have been submitted, as well as the ongoing monitoring reports from the mine itself. The existing permits that have been submitted as part of the application and includes the testimony and the exhibits that have been presented as part of the hearings that have been before the local planning agency as well as the city council. All of these materials demonstrate that the proposed amendments seek to implement the provisions not only of the statutes but also of the city's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The amendments discourage urban sprawl through the direction of growth in a manner that will protect natural resources. It will promote the efficient extension of infrastructure. It will conserve water and energy. It will preserve open space and provide recreational opportunities. It will provide for innovative development that will reclaim the existing mining lakes on the site, and the proposed amendment will implement the recommendations of the Citizens Water Task Force. Next slide, please. Based upon the application, the exhibits, and the testimony, it's my professional opinion that the BG Mine application has made a proper application and for these amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, and has met all of the applicable goals, objectives, and policies that are in the plan, as well as is consistent with statutory requirements found in Part II of Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. It also meets all of the generally accepted planning principles, and it is also my opinion that the application and testimony have provided the necessary record that would entitle the request for a recommendation of approval. And finally, it's my professional opinion that the proposed amendment properly seeks, as currently proposed, to implement a portion of the settlement agreement reached between BG Mine LLC and the City of Benita Springs. Be happy to provide as much additional detail or answer any questions the city council might have, but that is the entirety of my, my presentation, and thank you all for your attention.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel? Amy?
Well, I just want to say, this is basically executing the previously agreed to settlement.
Yes, ma'am.
The features of this. And absent, there's a couple little changes that are marked in red in here, but other than that, everything's the same as that we've already reviewed. So I'm in favor of it. I move to accept.
Just for a little bit of additional background, because this, even though this is implementing the settlement agreement that we entered into last December, and you've seen the language even in that settlement agreement, which is proposed here, I'd like staff to, because there is still a process, we want to make sure we've established the proper record for 163, staff to at least add a few more items on before you take a final vote.
Okay, good.
And it's a public hearing as well, if there's.
That's a good suggestion.
Anyone here?
Sorry, I forgot the staff.
Hi, Jack.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. New members of council, it's a pleasure to be speaking before you in this capacity today. If someone could load the staff presentation, please. Before I get.
And there's been a motion to approve in a second, lest somebody think I didn't hear that. I did hear that. Further discussion, and now this is the further discussion, Carson.
Wonderful.
Further discussion.
We're not talking the mines?
This is still the conservation fringe district. It's a new land use category that implements the settlement agreement. It's a text amendment and a map amendment. So it is related to the mine property and some additional lands just to the south. Okay? Again, thank you for having us today. We do have the ability to also connect in Special Counsel David Theriak, who also was involved in the settlement agreement before you. That's tied to the comprehensive plan amendments as well. Next slide, please. So the request, again, it's two comprehensive plan amendments. One is a text amendment where they're establishing a new land use category that's tied specifically to this property. The second amendment is the map in itself, which goes ahead and designates it on the future land use map. Request before city council today is to go ahead and adopt those amendments with changes as set forth in Exhibit A of the ordinance. Next slide, please. Just some summaries again, and a lot of this was covered in Mr. Dupu's presentation. This amendment is reviewed under Florida statutes and also under the settlement agreement. The action today is an amendment through the state's expedited review process. Essentially, that process is, is back in February, the amendment was transmitted to the state land planning agencies and was also afforded review by other agencies that may have concerns if it affected state resources or infrastructure, regional resources as well. Through that process, there was only one comment by the state land planning agency. It was a technical comment, wasn't required, but we went ahead and incorporated that into the ordinance, and I'll take care of that later. Otherwise, there were no other comments received by the agencies that provided comments that necessitated changes. So again, today's action is to adopt with changes the request that's before you today. This hearing was originally scheduled for March 18th, but as everyone's aware, it was postponed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. This is the location map. Again, Mr. Dupu went over this, so next slide, please. Future land use classifications, a lot of this information was already covered, so we can go ahead to the next slide, please. The two modifications, they are included into your Exhibit A document and also in the staff report. The changes are indicated in red text and underline. Again, the first one is to address the state land planning agency's comment about adding intensity to the amenity uses and the public uses. And then the other comment was a request by the applicant to go ahead and clarify the intent of Design Principle Number Nine. So those are the two changes that are included in your document. Next slide, please. This is the first modification, so again, you'll see it in the red text and in underline. This is essentially, very much falls in line with the settlement agreement language that was tied as one of the exhibits to the document. So we went ahead and took that language and inserted it into the land use text. Next slide, please. And then the other modification, as I stated, was for the Design and Planning Principle Number Nine, which goes into the mining lakes for water quality. So this is the change that the applicant and staff had discussed and ultimately are recommending for your consideration today. Next slide, please. Then future land use map. So that just indicates the current designation for DRGR and Resource Protection. Next slide, please. And this is the proposed map. Again, this is also in your Exhibit A. Next slide, please. And all the staff analysis remains the same as originally transmitted at the February hearing, so we have no new data and analysis to support or to add at this time. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation.
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
That concludes, okay. So is this, counsel, what's your pleasure? Questions for Jacqueline? That concludes, okay. So is this, Counsel, what's your pleasure? Questions for Jacqueline?
And if you, if there's no questions for staff, then I just want to put this back into context. This is the first of the, the final vote to settle, completing the settlement agreement. Next month, you will see the residential plan development, which will lay out the process for converting the, the existing BG mine from a mining operation into a residential development. So that, that will be coming up after this, after this vote, and it's a public hearing. So if there's anyone here for the public.
Councilman?
I just wanted to briefly, just for the public, kind of go over this one, because being one of the two people who didn't vote on this before, I allocated about, I would say, over six hours to fully understanding how this worked this week. I spent over an hour with Arlene. I spent over an hour with Derek, and I really wanted to understand the guts of this. And I think Amy summed it up well, you know? But for the people listening who may not have understood the historical context of how this came about, I'm just putting this into the record so that if people who don't understand can understand. Because for me, it's difficult to vote on something that wasn't part of the initial agreement, but I don't want to poo-poo anything. So I just want to explain where I'm going with this. Essentially, for those who don't know or don't understand, BG Mines has been an entitlement purgatory since about 2003. As Derek said, this is part of a two-portion vote that will effectively end the lawsuit. And I think we can, most of us can agree, we're sick of dealing with legal round, going round and round in court with anybody. What we get out of it, it settles the suit. We get 30 acres of parklands. We get the northern lake, which is going to have public use. We get 200 acres of, a water quality project, 248 acres, actually. We reduce the density they would originally have by about 1,000 units. And the reason I'm saying this is because most of you who know me politically long-term, I'm, I've been against DRGR development almost always. However, we are in a situation where I'm glad that you guys were forward-thinking enough to see that the situation was what it was, and you made a deal. And I think the deal that you made, I don't think, I think if they would have won and annexed themselves to the county, the deal that they were going to get was going to be significantly better. So though I don't love the idea of development out there, 700 homes ain't that bad compared to what they could get in addition to all of the other things they're going to give us. I'm going to support your initial decision and go with this. But I just wanted to walk all the way around how I got there, because this wasn't my decision to begin with. But now that we're here, I like to operate in, in what it is, and the reality is, this is the best deal that we're going to get out there. So whether you like it or you don't like developing the DRGR, you know, this is where we're at, so we have to make the best decision for the city. Because they're going to get impact fees if it goes to Lee County, so they're going to get the money, and then we're going to have to deal with all the people, and it's going to be way more people than we are going to allow anyway. So then we're going to deal with all the crap and not get any of the money. So to me, it's the difference between being a passenger or being a driver in this area that's been so critical to us for so long. So if it's up to us, I would say that we drive as opposed to passage and move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Laura?
I'm good, thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Chris?
The only thing I'm confused about is, as I understand the settlement agreement vote.
There you go, that's better.
The settlement agreement vote, it was a, it was a settlement agreement that you negotiated but then voted against? Am I correct on that?
Who? No.
Are you asking me or Derek?
No, you. That was my understanding, that for whatever reason you voted against the settlement agreement.
I don't believe so.
I think, I think the mayor had voted negative in one of the, the prior votes.
I couldn't hear him.
Prior, not the final settlement. It was unanimous.
Oh, it was unanimous.
I believe a settlement agreement, I'm trying, I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head, was unanimous.
All right. That was my only question.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Mike? Fred?
I'm good.
Okay. And I think on one of your earlier points, Chris, what you might be alluding to is, and I don't want to get too much into this, and certainly was involved in the negotiations, was involved when the property was bought, was aware of the pretenses on which the property was bought, introductions to the new owners several years ago, and then kind of how we got here. So how we got to this final resolve. And there were steps along the way that if everybody on this panel agreed to every step that this took, God bless them, I did not agree with every step that was taken. So I think what you're talking about, Chris, is why did I question that way, you know, once upon a time? So I think that might be what you're, what you're, what you're getting at. Councilman Purdon's comments were apropos, without a doubt. And certainly, Chris, you were, this will be a first vote for you on this as well, as, as the other, as the other new member. But I do want to point out, you got sworn in before Jesse. So Jesse, you are the newest member by about 15, 20 minutes. Chris, I think you got him?
Seniority.
So, but, 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 but look.
He didn't show up or something.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the city.
So Chris is in the number six hole, and Jesse's in the number seven hole in terms of seniority. But I digress. Just to shed light, look, everything we do in this city, if we're not asking questions on saying, how can we do it better? How can we do it more economically? I don't agree with that. Do we draw the line in the sand or do you ask questions? And I think the resolve and the resiliency of everybody in this room, it means you ask more questions, you dig deeper, you figure out what you can do, less with, do more with less, excuse me, I said that the wrong way, and always, always look at the bottom line economically. Now, this, this economic sandwich, I'll call it, involved politics, it involved law, it involved premonitions of when the property was bought. The property had a history. So with that in mind, I think folks that are listening understand what I'm saying, and that's, that's about all I'll say. Will I vote in favor of this today? Yes. Do I agree with everything that's happened along the way? No.
Can't get everything.
So with that, there's been, there has been a motion to accept in a second. Do we have further things to discuss?
Public comment.
Public comment. I apologize. Members of the public that would like to speak, please?
I might lose two friends on what I'm going to say right now. So, I love you, but.
On this item, Martha?
On this item.
Thank you, thank you.
On this item. When was this negotiated?
I'm sorry, Martha. Believe it or not, it's hard to hear you.
Okay, this was negotiated in June of last year? Okay, I want to question Councilman Purdon's ability to vote on this, being that he might have a conflict? Yes?
How do I have a comment?
Okay, okay, sir.
Hang on, let's, we'll let, we'll let Derek and Martha figure this out.
This is between Derek and I.
Actually, this is public comment, so we're listening.
Thank you.
We're listening.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much.
And you got three and a half minutes, and we're listening.
I understand. In June of last year, Councilman Purdon's campaign manager formed the PAC called the Southwest Florida Jobs Alliance in June. And in June of last year, BG Mines contributed $25,000 to that PAC. Some of that PAC money was spent, he said he didn't know about it, in his campaign for his council seat. And so because of that influence, I'm wondering if it's appropriate for Councilman Purdon, and it might pass anyhow, to vote on this item. Thank you, and I'm sorry, Jesse.
Believe it or not, it was hard to hear you, but thank you. I think we got the gist. Derek, is there anything that needs to be discussed there?
I, I'll answer the question after the rest of the public comment.
Okay. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none? There's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, further discussion. I'd like to go in the record and say that I have never, ever had a discussion, a conversation, or met anybody from the mine. Thank you, Martha. Continue.
What I was going to add is that Councilmember Purdon did raise this issue with me ahead of the vote to ask my, my opinion on it. And based on what he had provided to me, I do not feel that there is a vote conflict on this issue.
Right. The high road or the low road is one way of looking at it. Okay, Fred, yes?
I just want to add your comment on the ultimate settlement. One of these days, this thing will be fully settled, and I think when the transcripts are available, the public will see that we really needed to settle this out. And we, I think we made the best deal that we could for the people of Bonita. And as Councilman Purdon pointed out, had this gone a different way where they went in the county, you would have had more homes and you would have not had the, what do you call it, the revenue stream if it was created by it. So that's, that's my comment.
No, I appreciate that, Fred. And I think I said at one point, Chris, as one of those conversations as well, is nobody likes making a decision with a gun to your head, right? There's probably a better analogy, but that's the one I'm sticking with.
I wasn't quite that blunt.
No, I understand. I understand. But people need to understand that this is very, very, very serious. Not just serious. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Let's get to roll.
Call the question. There's been a motion to accept in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Anybody in the room have anything left to say?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye. Great. Thank you, everybody. Next item.
The water supply.
Or is it pizza time? Oh, hello. No pizza yet. Come on over.
Mayor, Counsel, it's fantastic to see you guys again. What we have in front of us at this point in time, there's no presentation, so it's the package you guys have. We'll try to keep it very brief and concise. It's an update to the water supply plan portion of our comprehensive plan. There's not major context changes. It's more or less the metrics, the tables, information from BSU, a relatively non-controversial issue to take a look at. The only changes that will be in this document from the previous one, you guys already approved the transmit, was additional information. I like to call a bit of bragging to the water managers about some of the cool conservation measures that we have in place throughout the city. Other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But for the most part, staff is comfortable proceeding forward with this, and we recommend that you guys approve it.
Okay. Counsel? I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, just remember, it's a public comment. Don't forget that part.
No, no, absolutely. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Questions?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Councilman Corey's made a motion to accept, and it was a second by Councilman Purdon. Is there further discussion? Okay, then we're going to go into public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Bueller, seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Your doctor's appointment.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was going to-
For the good of the order, we've already, we're good. Motion, so, anything else to cover?
Nothing.
Entertainer, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Thanks, everybody.